Did you say four oh nine seven?
Mm-hmm.
Or four oh four?
Point.
Okay. The Commissioners' Court of Brazos County will meet in regular session on September the 19th, 2023, 10:00 a.m. The Commissioners', actually I think 10:41, but the Commissioners' Courtroom in the County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. First item on the agenda is the Indication and the Pledge of Allegiance, and Commissioner Conover will lead the indication, and then we'll have others.
Lord, I want to thank you for the rain that we received. You know what we need more than we do, but God, we ask that you might please bless us with more steady rain, bring down the risk of fire, and help our folks in agricultural and ranching communities. I also want to thank you for those dedicating their lives to watching over us and keeping us safe, and for your love of us. I ask you to bless our conversations today, that our conversations are pleasing to you, and that we might all, on this dais and in this room, work in a spirit of cooperation and all of our shared love of this community. Amen.
Amen.
And we're going to have Laverne, you want to lead the Pledge of Allegiance to the U.S. flag?
If you will please stand as you are able. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then, Carla Dunn.
Yeah.
The Texas pledge. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you all. Second item on the agenda is call for citizens' input and our concerns, and we have a few wanting to speak. Is it Danica Rogers? Okay. Come on up.
So I'm Danica Rogers. I'm here in behalf of my husband, who's a combat veteran. So Pat Patterson left him hanging, so he went to inpatient at the VA program, which he has this much of health records, there's more. He's been in and out of the judicial system based on his mental illness and his codependency of drugs and alcohol due to his combat issues. He has recently, he has recently done the VA program and is trying to go to San Antonio for a program for combat veterans who deal with PTSD, so a more intensive program to help with those issues. I have wrote a letter to the courts concerning all the other charges that he's been dealing with, so is it okay if I read that letter real quick?
I think there's what, four minutes?
Okay. So it basically says, "My husband has," it says, "he has suffered with suicidal thoughts, dealing with flashbacks, and regret concerning his military service in special Navy forces. When he has informed me of these thoughts, I have called the police or the VA Crisis Hotline for welfare reasons only. On these occasions, my intent was to ensure that he wasn't going to harm himself. The police have misunderstood the situations and has treated me as a victim, and their response was focused solely on me and my safety. He has been diagnosed with chronic PTSD due to combat by the VA. He has had to deal with the bad side effects of the different medicines that he has been prescribed by his mental health team at the VA. My hopes and prayers that are not criminal charges concerning mental health issues of my husband, and that the court would take a medical approach, the mental health issues of my husband, approach to these issues, and trust the VA to help us. He's written, recently attended a 60-day inpatient program offered by the VA Temple. The program is geared towards discovering the best medicine for his diagnosis. He is scheduled to attend an additional inpatient PTS program. I also want to, because of the current situation and what has occurred, there has been orders done to where my husband can't have contact with his kids, and it has been detrimental for them because they don't understand, I can't explain it to them. I'm here because there's many veterans that go through this same process, that they need help, they don't need a jail cell, they need somewhere where they can get the mental health help that they need, so they don't continue to go into the judicial system and feel like, oh, well, nobody cares, nobody understands what's going on here. So in his diagnosis, he has, he's told me of his experiences, and yes, it has affected him to the point that he does have nightmares, and it affects him day to day, but he used those substances to hide that, and then there are side effects to those type of things. And, you know, that's why he has these charges, and I'm just trying to be a voice to not just him, but many of these combat veterans that are afraid to come forward because they're embarrassed.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. You know, we can't respond in the public comment, though. Thank you, though. Cynthia Wiley.
Cynthia Wiley, good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I've spoken twice already this morning, so I will make this short. What magic words can I, your constituent, say other than no new revenue? In fact, I would not object should you decide to engage in a property tax abatement that is offered up to corporations and developers. Which master do you serve? Your wants and your needs, and out of respect, which I do want to express to you, I understand that there are budget concessions that you probably do make that we're not aware of, and for that I thank you. But as a private citizen, I'm looking at reasonableness versus excessiveness, and I can only judge by what the paper shows me. I don't understand, and maybe there is a hypersensitivity to long-range plannings to secure funding prior to being realized. I do appreciate the dissenting voices, and Commissioner Aldridge, I appreciate you bringing up points that us probably hadn't heard before, so I appreciate you, and I thank you for that. As a business owner, we all understand long-range planning, so I don't fault you for that, I just question the amount of long-range planning that gets done. And I think we've talked about so much money. You're estimating an annual budget surplus of $20 million for the year that will be ending September 30th last year. Two of you predicted that the no new revenue rate would have a dire consequence for Brazos County financial condition, and obviously that did not happen because we had a surplus, and I quote the word surplus, of $20 million. So I think the question that some of us have is, would either of you that dissented on that no new revenue reconsider your position this go-round? Hearing all of the people that have been up here speaking, I don't know that anybody would walk up here and say, please do, keep the rate, in fact, go higher. I don't think we're going to have that. So I thank you for your time, and I thank you for your service.
Thank you. Catherine Vans.
Catherine Vans, I was thinking about the budget items, and I think it was this gentleman who was pointing out that we, many of us, have not been present at these meetings every Tuesday, and I'm guilty of that. I have been serving meals on wheels every Tuesday at 10:00 a.m., and I've not wanted to give that up in order to be here, but it's made clear to me now that that's a mistake, and I need to give up delivering meals on Tuesdays so I can be physically here to listen to all these budget issues, because maybe some of them need to be revisited. We all make our budgets at home, and sometimes we say, well, we need a vacation, or I would like to build a shed outside, and we have to revisit those ideas because we can't afford it anymore. And so maybe some of these grandiose plans, from my perspective, and again, I haven't been here for these budget meetings, and I'm guilty of that, maybe some of these plans that we don't, we're not already halfway into should be revisited. We can't all afford what you're suggesting.
Thank you. I believe the next one is for number seven, so we will move on to consider and take action on Agenda Ibs three through 23. Number three is proclamation 23 dash 27, declaring September 17th through the 23rd, 2023, as Constitution Week. Move for approval?
Second.
Postman seconded in discussion. All papers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Well, none motion carried. So whereas September 17th, 2023, marks the 236th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States designating September 17th through the 23rd, 2023, as Constitution Week. Now therefore, be it claimed that Brazos County Commissioners' Court does hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd, 2023, as Constitution Week, and urges our citizens to reaffirm the ideals which framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by diligently protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through our guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained, and express gratitude for the privilege of being an American in the republic which functions under the oldest constitution still alive and used today. Claim the 19th day of September, 2023.
We will be very brief this morning, especially in consideration of our time factor. It should be noted that the Constitution is alive and well here in this room today. In fact, one of the main discussions today, that of taxes, is directly related to the Constitution. The Articles- The Articles of Confederation, which was our governing body after the war, well, the Revolutionary War, was a weak document. It did not allow for the reliable collection of taxes. So therefore, no money to run the government. And that fed to a Constitutional Convention, which was originally called to re, to revise the Articles of Confederation. Once they got there, they found out they could not do that. And then there you go with our new Constitution in 1787. So the word taxation this morning is absolutely appropriate. And we very much thank you, Judge, and the county commissioners, and all of the citizens of this community for supporting your Constitution. And I think we can say that's a big "whack!"
All right.
I'm going to a, I'm going to, I'm going to say a to that.
Come up and take pictures. You finished that with a bang, so.
Did she do that? She said, yeah. She's, y'all do it.
Y'all come up and, and, she's front wheel. Thank you. Okay, number four is approval of the appointment and reapportment of the following BB COG Criminal Justice Advisory Committee with the term September 1, 2023 to August 31, 2025.
Move approval, A through G?
Second. Most made seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number five is acceptance of donated unclaimed property left in, by inmates leaving Brazos County Detention Center for the months of March and May 2023.
Move approval, second.
Most made seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number six is adoption of the county budget for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2024.
Move approval, second.
And I think there's some amendments that were...
Yes.
So let me, I think there were some housekeeping administrative things that needed to happen, so let me run through those. The recollection of funds for the appropriate accounts by increasing the use of reserve fund balance and adj, adjusting the Brazos Central Appraisal District, which would have an increase of $11,124 to the community contract budget. So that increases the budget by, but it's, I think it was something we got in late, potentially so that we found out what it was actually going to cost for the Central Appraisal District.
And so that needs a motion?
That needs a motion.
Move approval, second.
Most made seconded discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? None, motion carries. The second is reallocation of funds to the appropriate accounts by increasing the use of reserve fund balance, 171,068, and adjusting the Sheriff's Office Jail, non-capital repair and maintenance for the same amount to replace the HVAC units in the jail.
Move approval, second.
Most made seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number, this, next one is change position titles for the following Texas Intergent Defense Commission grant, job code B0131, felony defender, public defender in the public defender two, job code BO132 misdemeanor defender, public defender to the public defender one. And this will have zero effect on the root, the total Brazos County budget.
Move approval, second.
Most made seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number, the next one is change position title for the following Information Technology Department, job code B1235, audiovisual specialties to audio video specialist. This will have a zero net effect on Brazos County budget.
Move approval, second.
Most made seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number, the, well, the next one is change position to the title for the following juvenile court referee, job code B2206, associate judge two to felony associate judge, juvenile court referee, job code 2906, B2906, and court coordinator, juvenile referee, CT interpreter, juvenile court referee to court coordinator, and juvenile referee court, certified interpreter. This will have zero effect on the total budget.
Move approval, second.
Most made seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number, the next one is change position title for the following under associate judge one, job code B2201, associate judge one to misdemeanor associate judge. This will have zero effect on the net budget of Brazos County.
Move approval, second.
Most made seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. The next one is change position titles for the following under associate judge two, job code, job code felony associate judge, juvenile court referee. Associate judge number two is funded 50% by juvenile court referee division 22500100, and 50% by associate judge two division 22800100, job code 2267, court reporter, associate judge two to court reporter, family law associate judge, job code 2208, bailiff, associate judge two to bailiff, family law associate judge, and job code 2209, court coordinator to associate judge two to the court coordinator, family law associate judge.
Move approval, second.
Most made seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Now, I think there were some other...
Yeah. Judge, I'd like to motion that would create additional deputy sheriff's administration job code B1415, position 38, to be assigned to the courthouse security. This will increase salary and wages by $96,048, increase benefits by $42,125, and increase supplies and other changes, charges by $1,000 in the sheriff's office administration, and increase the use of a reserve fund balance of $140,173. Supplies and other charges consist of $1,000 for uniforms, the cost for the following items such as a bulletproof vest, $1,000 handheld radio, $2,000 taser, $2,500, and the cost for a county cellphone. $600 will come out of fund $22,000 courthouse security division 51000100.
Move approval, second.
All right, that was my motion.
That's your motion, I'm sorry.
I'll second.
That's all right.
Okay, most made seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries.
If I could make another motion, that's to create additional telecommunications officer, this is a dispatch professional, for the sheriff's administration, job code B1444, position one. This will increase salary and wages by $45,745, and increase benefits by $28,492 in the sheriff's office administration, and increase the use of reserve fund balance by $74,237. That's my motion.
Second.
Most made seconded, further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries.
If I could, one more motion, and that is to create a position called Program Reentry Caseworker for the Sheriff's Office Jail Administration, job code B1564, position one. This will increase salary and wages by $61,576, increase benefits by $32,433, and increase supplies and other charges by $2,700 in the sheriff's office jail administration, and increase the use of reserve fund balance by $96,709. Supplies and other charges consist of $2,500 for a computer and $200 for a desk phone. That's the motion.
Second.
Most made seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Question.
Okay.
I think that's the, hold on just a second here.
I can't hear you, sir. Would you speak into the mic?
Yeah, that's, so how many total positions now have we amended the budget by with regard, and how many of those are for the sheriff's office?
Three.
Three for the sheriff's office.
And total positions?
You've got the sheets there.
1,007 positions is where we will be up to with this budget, with those three included.
Adding the three.
Yes.
Okay. And then since all of those amendments, well, I'll tell you what, we'll wait until we get to the next one because it's going to deal with reserves as well.
I'm assuming you're going to want a total?
Uh, yeah, but let's go ahead and get through with the motion and...
Like to propose vehicle replacement for Constable Precinct Three, Unit 901, to include the cost of equipment that is not transferable, decals and window tinting. This would increase the use of reserve fund balance by $64,000, and increase capital outlay in the general capital improvement fund by $64,000.
Second. Most made seconded, further discussion.
I'm sorry, Judge, can we go back to the last motion, Commissioner Conover and Lemay? I think there was a question by Commissioner Aldridge before you concluded the vote on that one, so we, I need to get a clear vote on the last one that Commissioner Conover wrote.
If memory serves, we voted, and then I asked the question.
You did, but I didn't see your vote.
Oh, then my vote was four.
Okay, thank you.
That'll clarify that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, not a problem. Not a problem, thank you.
You have a motion, second on the floor.
Okay, so now, yes, we've got a motion and second, I think we voted on the last one for the car.
No, we haven't, yet.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Okay, so that completes the amendments to the budget.
And question I do have is, is that changes our number, we have in the last budget sheet that we all received from our last budget session, that there was going to be $13 million used from reserves, and how much does that increase that to?
Can you say that again, sir?
Uh, well, okay, in our, in our, in this sheet that we got on the budget.
Yes.
The summary, we are allocating $13 million. Last year, we, we used 51 million of reserves. This year, there's a 31, $13 million?
The 30, excuse me, now you got me doing it.
31, $13 million from reserves, so what does it bring that total to now with the amendments?
It's adding $556,000.
Okay.
Now, that 13 million is just contingency and indigent healthcare, the use of assigned fund balances.
All right. So that number then would get to be from reserves, that would be 13,556,000 now.
Not including capital.
As amended.
Yes, not including capital.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, and I'd, I'd like to offer, I know you haven't received it in advance, but, you know, I know that people have a significant problem with voting for a deficit budget. I think that we've proven last year, and it would certainly apply to be the same thing this year, that since we don't spend at least 10% of what we appropriate, that the budget would be neutral at the no new revenue rate, but in order to make sure that that is not a problem where we are voting for a deficit budget, I'd like to amend that we take, we, we have a 19 net, from what you have provided us with here, a net fund balance increase for this year of 19 million.
Estimated?
Of 19,215,000.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I would propose that we amend this budget where we take an additional $12.926 million that is the deficit amount out of our fund balance, because we're picking up, we're banking $19 million. If we take 13 million, then we have a balanced budget even on paper, correct?
If you increase the use of fund balance...
If we take $13 million of, out of our reserve funds...
And you would need to reduce the revenue budget. If, uh, so you're going to increase reserves without reducing the proposed revenue budget?
No, no, no. What I'm talking about doing is, is reduce reserve fund balance. We, we generated 19, you're, you have given us figures that say that we've generated 19, we're projected to generate nine, a net 19.215 million dollars.
Yes.
This year.
But the proposed budget...
Yes, okay.
Is based on increased proposed tax rate.
Right. Well, what I'd like to do is, is instead of raising taxes for people, we can do...
So you want to decrease property tax revenue and increase the use of fund balance?
Yes, to offset by 12.926, 800, 12.926, 842 million dollars.
So 12,926, 842?
Yes. That way, we would have the ability to be able to fully fund even on paper this budget.
I understand the motion, yes, sir.
And have no impact, because we could establish a no new revenue rate and have no impact on local taxpayers above what they had to pay for existing properties last year on average.
I understand the motion.
So just let me make clear, number six, I believe, is to pass a budget. Number seven will...
That includes revenues and reserve fund balance.
Right.
He's in the right zone.
I'm, 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 I'm on the field.
I'm not trying to be ugly, he's in the right, he's, he's suggesting to reduce property tax revenue by 12,926,842 revenue, and increase the use of fund balance by the same amount. Those are both budget items. We're not at the tax rate yet.
We generated 19 million dol, real simply, we generated a $19 million surplus this last year. My proposal is to take 12.926 million of that and use it to fund from the growing reserves from last year to fund this budget with additional reserves that we see here. And that way, we can maintain the no new revenue rate, not increase taxes on people, and have even on paper, a balanced budget. That's my, and I'm, and I will make that in the form of a motion.
So you've made a motion to amend the budget by changing the source of how that budget gets funded. So I got a motion. Is there a second? Hearing no second, that motion fails.
Wow.
That, okay, so now we've got, to vote on the budget, settle down. To vote on the budget, we're, we'll need a motion and a second to, to pass the, go ahead.
Sir, we, we have a motion and a second to approve the budget as it was proposed. I believe...
Oh, was there a...
Commissioner Berry would need to, to modify her motion to include the 12 amendments that were voted on, on the budget that was proposed.
I agree to that. So I, I move that we adopt the budget for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2024, including the...
There's only 11 listed.
The 11 amendments that we have voted on.
No, it ended with precinct three vehicle. I had the judge had eight. And the judge had eight, and then Commissioner Conderla had three, and then.
And then Commissioner Barry had one.
Yep.
Okay, so we, we passed the, we, those proposed.
The printed proposed, that we knew about budget amendments, there was a total of eleven.
Okay.
Amendments, so.
And those all passed? So now, we're going back to the original. And, and was the motion made for the original budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Including the amendments.
And amended.
Yes, amended, so that include the original motion plus the eleven amendments.
Okay, that's a, that's a motion to amend it.
Second.
Okay, a motion made, seconded, to vote on the proposed budget, including the eleven amendments that were already voted on. Got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, folks.
Okay, so, next is, uh, resolution twenty-three dash zero nineteen, levying a tax rate for the Brazos County for the tax year twenty twenty-three.
I'd like to make a motion. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of point four oh nine seven zero zero, which is effectively an eight point nine four percent increase in the tax rate. That's my motion.
Okay, that's, how, how much is that as an increase?
Got a motion and a second.
How much of that is, 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 is that as an actual tax increase?
Eleven million, five hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Okay, so as opposed to, your, uh, proposal would be to, as opposed to increasing taxes by fifteen, in roughly a fifteen point five three four million dollars, it would be to raise taxes by eleven?
Eleven point five, yes, sir.
Okay, I, I can't support that motion because, uh, we could have paid for this out of reserves as I previously tried to amend the budget, but, I appreciate your efforts on a compromise, but I can't support it because I don't think there's a need to. We have the money and we, we did, we failed to appropriate the money we already have.
Yeah, again, the reserve is built up of money that this body has voted in over years, including yourself.
I will respectfully disagree with you.
Sure, you can.
Because on the sheet that we all received, a lot of that that's built up is salary and benefits that were not paid. So if we didn't pay those salary and benefits, are we going to retroactively go back and pay those?
No, sir.
Okay, so, so how can you make the statement that that reserve, because every year, that amount was added to the reserves, Commissioner Conderla?
It's easy to look at budget years.
No, no, it was.
I haven't interrupted you one time, sir, could I have that same respect? Thank you for that. FY twenty-three, FY twenty-two, the change in the general fund balance was thirty-two million, eight hundred seventy-one thousand. FY twenty-one, it's thirty-one million, six hundred and three thousand. You have the fund, the, uh, the rate, excuse me, the amount of money that is unable to be used in the year that it's budgeted for goes to fund balance, that is increased twice, we've talked about why, we don't agree, but you know what, that's okay. I, I don't have to be angry with you that we don't agree, and I, I don't, I don't have to interrupt you or, or anything else. We don't agree, and, and spending thirteen million out of reserve, uh, uh, fund balance is, is where we disagree, and that's, that's okay. Commissioner, that's okay, we just disagree.
There's nothing.
At this point, we have a motion without a second.
A second.
Shouldn't be a discussion or a motion.
There was a second.
A second, yes.
Judge, we do have a speaker for this item, though.
Commissioner Conderla, let me, let me just.
Have a speaker.
Let me just say this, Commissioner Conderla, there's nothing personal here. As all the things that I stated last year, I have, and I apologize if it comes across as aggressive, but I have an aversion to what's going on here, and it it's an emotional response, and I apologize for that, because this is not personal. But when I see that in nineteen, almost four million dollars was not spent on salary and benefits, when I see in two thousand and twenty, over five million dollars was not spent on benefits, when I see in twenty-one, seven million dollars was not spent on salary and benefits, and what I see in, uh, twenty-two, seven point five plus million dollars was not spent in salary and benefits, so how can you say that that money, because it goes into fund balance, how can you say that part of it is for things that we've already committed to expend when we didn't spend them? And we're not going, from what the auditor just said, we're not going to go back and pay salary and benefits to people in prior years who did not work in those positions.
And those positions did not go away, they're in the next budget and the next budget, and because whoever, an elected official or department head was unable to fill, and it, it's not necessarily the same position every year, it may be another position, so we can, we can agree to disagree.
Let me, let me rephrase my question, Judge. Respectfully, let me rephrase my question, okay? What amounts of those monies are we going to actually pay for? And what amounts of those monies did not get banked into our fund balance on each of those years? I didn't think that was a rhetorical question.
I can't give you the answer, I don't know what you, you. All I can tell you is that those.
Let me try to clarify.
Let me tell you that those positions were funded in the year that they were supposed to be filled, and at the end of the year, if they did not get filled, that money went into fund balance. We're not going back and going to say, okay, well, last year, we're going to fund what didn't get filled, because those, it may not be the same positions, but the next year, you've got positions, and I don't, whatever they are, and they're going to have to be funded because they may get filled. So, we agree to disagree.
But where did the money go that was not spent on salaries? Where did it go?
It's in fund balance.
Okay.
You've said that plenty.
So how does, how does what's going to happen this year have any impact on those monies that have been banked over the last four years that we know of?
They're on fund balance.
So they're in fund balance, yeah, thank you.
Okay, that's a straight answer.
I said that three times. So, we've got one public speaker, so Susan Lucas, come on up.
It probably would have been better for me to start, to have spoken before you started this discussion.
Speak into the microphone, please.
It, it's probably better, it would have been better for me to have done this before you started this discussion, because I am going to make a comment on this discussion before I say what I was going to say, and that is, there is no way you can convince anybody in this audience that the money that was not spent and put into the fund balance is needed for next, for this next year, because that money, if they're still going to fund the, uh, the item, is going to be in the budget. So going back to my original testimony, I'm asking that you go to the no new, no revenue rate. The people, um, in this, um, state, much less this county, are fixing to get a big surprise if they haven't gotten it already. The, the people in this county need every penny that they can get to account for things like insurance rates for both automobile and property that has gone up this year driven by the state, huge amounts of increases. And a lot of the people who don't pay their taxes, I mean, their, their, um, insurance, et cetera, and they don't escrow. The people who've escrow, who don't escrow have, begin to see it already, but all the people who escrow are fixing to get a humongous surprise when the escrows are redone, uh, in January and February, when they have an increase in both the county taxes as well as huge increases in their property taxes, et cetera. We need relief, and every bit of relief we can get, the better. And so I, I, and so, I ask that you reconsider, Commissioner Aldridge's motion.
Okay, thank you. So, we have got a motion and a second, uh, with a tax rate of point zero four zero seven one four, is that, is that correct?
Do I have the right one? Yeah, you're right, just, no, you don't.
I got the wrong one.
We need to, we need to state both the INS rate, the debt service rate, as well as. Thank you.
Okay, so this is the correct one, okay. This, uh, I'm, you already stated this.
I did.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second to approve, adopt a tax rate of point four zero nine seven, which is effectively an eight point nine four percent increase in the tax rate. We've got a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Okay, it's eight to one. Now, you want.
I'd like to move that the maintenance and operation portion of the two thousand twenty-three county tax rate be point three six eight nine eight six cents per one hundred of value.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, to, uh, set the maintenance and operations portion to point three six eight nine eight six. Motion and a second, so all in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Okay.
I'd like to move that the debt portion of the two thousand twenty-three county tax rate be point zero four zero seven one four cents per one hundred of value.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, to, uh, approve the debt portion at point zero four zero seven one four per hundred dollar valuation. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? None, okay.
I'd like to thank Commissioner, uh, Conderla for his compromise, and I guess, uh.
I, we're all in this together, and we've got a lot of work to do before the next budget, so I'd love to see us as a commissioners' court work, work together to do that.
Absolutely.
And, uh, converse throughout the year what track we're on, and maybe we won't agree a year from now, but, uh, I, I think that everyone here is trying to do the best thing they can for the county as they see it with the information that we have. I've spent hours with, with audit and budget to come up with this compromise, and I appreciate the commissioners' court in, in supporting that by majority.
As long, I I echo your sentiments for collaboration on behalf of the benefit of the people who we have the ability to levy taxes upon. I appreciate them being here to speak in opposition to the proposed tax rate, and I think I saw quite a lot of dissension in the group relative to the amended tax rate, which I appreciate a little bit's better than nothing. But, those conversations don't need to take place in violation of the Open Meetings Act. They need to be conversations that take place in the public as required.